Update possible action on the downtown sidewalk project, Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor. This has been a long, talked about a long time. I feel like it's time to make a decision. And stick with it, Mr. Beckley, it's an A, B, and C option, I guess. I guess I could throw a motion out so we can discuss it. And I, honest to God, don't care which way we walk or work here today, I follow him. I don't know if there's any fight left in me on it. I don't agree with spending billions of dollars up there when we can repair it before 50. So therefore, I would like to make a motion that we repair the sidewalks where needed. If we have to hire an engineering firm to come in and tell us what's needed, or Mr. Beckley is concerned. Install, we've got in the legislative text, a two-man crew, add them to the city. We can implement our 10-year sidewalk plan after they get down on Main Street. If they're not professionals when they come in, they won't be when they get down on Main Street. So, we've got a lot of sidewalks to build, a lot of places where they terminated years ago. And I think they're as important as Main Street. So I'd like to make a motion that we implement, go ahead and get started, a repair program. On sidewalks and any bases on the poles that need repairing. And turn T-Dot loose to pave. Almost good. Is that fair to you?
I'll second that.
No motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Um, let me...
Yes, sir.
I have made a concerted effort this past week to go out and look at the sidewalks, walk Main Street, and to contact a variety of people, both Main Street, downtown business owners, side streets, a couple of city crosswalk residents, a county commissioner that is in the city. Altogether, I've heard from 19 people. And here's the outcome of my results, my discussions. Of the 19 people that I heard from, there were four that wanted to do the full-blown project, I believe it was the 2.1, what was it, 2.7, somewhere around there? Wanted to do the full-blown project. Four were non-committal, you know? Yeah, I think it would be pretty, yeah, I like it, but I'm okay if you do, just fix them, I'm not going to be upset. And 11 said, fix them, don't do the full-blown project. Now, this consisted of, like I said, it was a Main Street business owners, those just right off Main Street, the little side streets, a couple of business owners owned down 127, a couple of business owners down 70, a couple of residents, and one county commissioner. So, all I can tell you is that these are the results of my survey of the people and who I've talked to and heard from.
Well, Councilmember White, correct, you guys have been fighting this for a long time, probably what, how long you been on?
Eight years.
Six.
Six? But I think it's been going on about eight.
It has, I'm sure it's been going on eight. There's been millions of dollars spent on it already, engineering and all that. There was three and a half million dollars in grants and funding that were acquired to work with the original plan, which got shot down. And those funds had to be, were returned. The easements that were acquired to do the original plan, they were donated to the city, which in turn donated to the state. And for the property owners that donated that, if they wanted their easements back, my understanding is now they would have to buy them from the state. The economic development people that we have talked to have talked about how vital downtown is for a community, and how a younger generation than me enjoys downtown and smaller town activities. We were told by the Austin group that did a survey of our community about economic development that the best two things we had going for us downtown were the social brew and the Palis Theater. So for the advancement of our community, I think that this patching up is totally different than what the plan is. The plan included $450,000 for conduit, repairing the conduit that we have underground, which is not the conduit, plus for future crosswalks. And I just hate to see us spend 37 and a half months on a patch-up job when the contract that was discussed and then Tim worked on the last time, not the current time, to be completed in a much, much quicker and more professional timeframe. So, I prefer what we voted on and approved back in March. And I'm assuming that that would have to be rescinded as well, would it not, say?
Was a, Salo and the Menace, was a motion passed regarding this?
In May, May 12th, 2015, there was a motion that the downtown sidewalk project be approved with alternate number two, which was using the, had to do with the street lights and new pipe and wiring.
And included new streetlights for downtown, plus Tim was going to use the old streetlights out of the ballpark.
Right.
Parking lot.
Yeah, and then the following month was, the contract was approved with CT Consultants for the engineering services.
So this motion...
For all that new design.
This motion would essentially be amending that one. And so, it would need a, it would need a three-fourths vote of members present. So this council today would take three votes.
Well, in thinking about what I call the fix versus the full-blown project, the will of the council is to fix the sidewalks, I have a little bit of a different kind of thought, even if we just go with a fix versus tearing them out from Taylor Hotel all the way down to Mayberry's Furniture. I would prefer to see a contractor come in and do that, so we don't spend a long time working on it, and then move on with our sidewalk plan. And we wanted to have a crew, we want to have them for future construction of sidewalks or future repair of sidewalks, but I have a little bit of a different kind of thought. Even if we're going to fix them, I believe we need to get in there and fix them and get out.
I have a comment, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Tim, tell me if I'm wrong, Mayor mentioned 37 months. That was for the city to hire a crew and tear out every sidewalk from north to south of Main Street and replace it, correct?
That was from Netchum to just south of Lantana.
South of Lantana. The repair, would repair the ADA radiuses and repair any need tow care. And I think you told me, it's probably not ending, that we're talking six to nine months, probably, is that right?
Once construction starts, we'll probably, within that timeframe, somewhere from six to six months to a year, depending on what we come up with. But we're not going to be able to start on that since we hired the team employees. We're going to have to send the changes to T-Dot and Tim approve those changes because it'd be a year before we get the approvals back from T-Dot to do the spot repair.
But if alternate two is just like that it was voted on last year, you can't turn it loose today to be bid on, correct, because of the pole on the upper end of Main Street?
It's when I brought it to you, I think in May of this year, I need some direction from you all, whether we move the funding from the Fourth Street traffic signal on West Avenue to the Lantana traffic signal, so that we can get the pole moved there. That's the only holdup as far as getting T-Dot to sign off on the full-blown sidewalk replacement from Netchum and just south of Lantana. They've approved everything in the plans except for that one pole being located in the sidewalk. We've already got issues now with trucks hitting those poles. And the original downtown project, before we went to this sidewalk plan, actually showed those poles moving back away from the intersection. And that's, and what we purchased for had right-of-way donated in that area to move those poles back. So that's where we're at. We actually stopped the engineer back in May, when you asked us to look at this, I think it was May, when you asked us to look at it as far as doing it in-house. And the engineer's waiting to determine whether we're going to do that corner of Lantana and Main, or whether we pull that section out of the project and not do anything with the traffic signal.
Because we're searching on Main Street, isn't it?
Well, it's got a step in it. I don't know, I don't know what it's going to look like if we, I've not really looked at it as far as the spot repair to see how far we'd have to come away from the corner to do an ADA section of sidewalk there.
Any other questions or discussion on this item?
And I would say, as far as that traffic signal situation, we've got to have a decision to T-Dot by September 30th, if we're going to switch what we're used to funding for. We've got to make a decision.
I have a question. In the motion to fix that Councilman White's made, does that entail painting of curves, painting of crosswalks? Because I've had a lot of comments that, you know, we don't have a problem with our, you know, our sidewalks, and we'll, you know, we'll fence them, but we need some crosswalks. You know, T-Dot comes through, even if we paint down, T-Dot can come through and pave, and then we'll have to repaint them, but how does that fit into your picture?
I think he's got something.
I want to refer back to my memo. We came up with a guess that if we done the spot repair, and it's merely a guess, that it'd be somewhere from 30% to 35% of the total project. And we basically took the overall cost of performing the overall repairs for the whole thing, and just took 30% of it. The only problem with that is, if we do the spot repairs, we're not, we're not replacing streetlights, and the total cost to replacing streetlights and conduit, so...
When I'm saying crosswalks, I'm not talking about, you know, a push button on a light pole, I'm talking about painting the ground.
I think it can certainly include that. One of the reasons that they're so fated today is because we put T-Dot off for the last six years for their paving. And we don't want to go out there and paint, and they're going to paint next week. We really don't, if we're doing permanent markings, we're not painting, we're doing a thermo. It's a heated plastic that's laid on asphalt, and it's about $10 a square foot. So, and that's what will occur once the paving happens.
She said, of course, I'm not an expert, but what about temporary painting of some sort, just to get by until they can come through and paint? Is that a real expensive venture?
No, we actually put $40,000 in this year's budget to re-stripe the downtown area with the crosswalks. And I think that's in Kevin's budget, business, he gets it. So he can hire, he can hire some part-time employees and actually do some painting around town with that. $40,000 was a number that I picked up for permanent striping, and he knew that he could get the temporary striping, actual paint, get under that, and do striping in other So that money's already in the budget, but if we're going to turn T-Dot loose to pave, I don't think they're going to get it done this fall. I mean, they've already wrote us off for this fall. So I think it's probably going to be sometime next year before we ever get the opportunity for them to come in and pave.
But I'm saying, in the interim...
We could paint that, yes.
Yeah, you know, between then and when they pave, because for T-Dot, you never know. I mean, they could really know. Pevon Rose is a perfect example, you don't know with the young exactly.
Well, even if we don't do anything with the sidewalks right now, we have money in the budget to go in and we can go in and do that painting.
Any other questions for Mr. Beckley?
You think if we done the poles and conduit, do we not have to buy BEC out on that contract that we've got with them on those 32 volt?
I think we paid for those poles the first 10 years with BEC. They look at everything that's underground out there as ours, just like they did on all the other block poles that we've had installed here in the last 10 years. If any of the work needs to occur higher than our bucket truck, they perform it, and if anything needs to occur underground, we perform the work.
Who owns the sidewalks?
I think the sidewalks are actually on T-Dot right-of-way.
We actually had to sign, the council had to have a lease and approval for this whole project by that, from T-Dot. There's a few, some parts of the sidewalks where we had to get easements are on private property. They're mostly on the south side, or the west side.
Do we know where all the property lines are, that are, visit a wild guess, or what?
We have a pretty good survey from the regional project, that delineates a lot of the property line. I couldn't begin to tell you how close the survey is, but it was performed by a registered surveyor.
In your investigation on this, the past work, the places where the asphalt is higher than the sidewalk, was that part of your repair?
Let me say again, the 30%, 35% was merely a guess. We need some direction from council on what spot repair you all would like to have. I don't think that we've got, the only section of sidewalk excluding the corners that I feel like is fully ADA is the section in front of the courthouse. And the problem with the section in front of the courthouse, it doesn't have any curve and gutter. Your curve and gutter is your ditch line for your road. Eventually, that's going to cause a problem, because the water runs over to the edge of the sidewalk. It does follow the edge of the sidewalk, but it goes through the crack where the two materials meet. We've got a lot of trip hazards, which certainly aren't ADA throughout the downtown area. And we have some side slope issues, where the slope from left to right when you're walking down the sidewalk is steeper than what is approved by ADA. That's not really a trip hazard, but it's ADA issue. If we just go through and do spot repairs, we won't have ADA into every building. We don't have ADA currently now into every building off the sidewalk. Some of those areas are steeper than required, or they don't have the right landing outside of what's required to enter the ramp. If we bring up some of the corners to ADA after T-Dot has already paved, we may have to install a bunkout into the new pavement. We also may have to mill some of the asphalt out and perform some new paving or some patchwork in the asphalt to get the water around the corner.
So the patch-up job is, I guess, work at this juncture, really, I mean, you can make good estimates, but that's basically what it boils down to, is to see the pants, is just move along, see what happens next. This project started out eight years ago, I'm guessing, and at one time, I think it was basically around $10 million. Which a lot of those things on that were totally eliminated, to come back with a basic, replacing the sidewalks and doing the project right. Put conduit in there for future crosswalk lighting, if need be, replacing the conduit and the new lights that are up to be there now, and then again, possibly using the old, that old light pole from Main Street out and send him to park in the parking lot where the woodpeckers live. I think this thing's been kicked around long enough, and it's about time to bite the bullet and go ahead and do it right. So, I would personally, I'll stick with the amendment or the motion that was voted on back in May, I believe it was, which March?
May of 15.
May of 15, thank you.
If the full-blown project's done, is that we went to around a four, maybe four cent tax inquiries to support, support that expenditure?
Actually, you've got money in the bank, you can cut a check and pay for it.
If you draw down on your reserve money.
Well, you've got your ADA seven and a half million, and then you've got your additional funds that you've acquired over the years in other accounts, at what, four and a half millions in there? Or you can get pretty good interest on one, and make it happen. Of course, it was removed from our budget, uh, through the budget time.
Well, the concern, some of the concerns also that you have to think about, and some people expressed to me, again, like I said, I've heard from 19 people here, you know, if you bump those radiuses out, you're narrowing the turning radius. We've got some businesses right on Main Street that don't have back doors to receive deliveries. We're going to have big trucks come down through there. That's 127, it's a main thoroughfare, it's not Asheville, North Carolina, or Gatlinburg, Tennessee. I mean, it's never going to be like one of those little, and based on, based on that, I mean, how do I tell people we're going to spend 2.7 billion when four said do it, four said I don't care, and 11 said, don't do it, just fix them?
Can I confirm that?
Yes, sir.
I think that 2.7 was for pedestrian light, which was around 55 poles. And what the council actually approved was to replace the lights downtown. I think it's 31 poles that are similar in style to the poles that are there now. And if you take off the contingency here, which is the best estimate we have today, it's about 1.95 million, it's not the 2.7. It was the option two in the original estimate that we received from the engineer. And he could probably, if he was to go through and finish this, he could probably tighten that estimate up a little more. He used that 20% contingency in the beginning because he didn't know as much about what it would take to get the water around the corners and stormwater, storm drainings around the corners and things like that. He didn't know what was, what he would run into. And that's part of the reason that he put in that 20%. But in order for us to compare the numbers, I somewhat had to take that 20% out, because I use the same quantities that he used in his estimate for the city to actually build.
Your memo also stated the total in-house cost, as per your estimates, 1.4. Where did the 500 or whatever number come up with, Jim Innsco? Stand for it, bud.
It's on the last page.
Well, we know that even with the tightened up estimate of the 1.9 million, you know, just like I did, we can get in there and start digging, and you don't know what you're going to come up against, you're going to always have probably some change orders or more likely run into a few contingencies. So, you know, I still, I still believe we'll be over two by the time we finish. Honestly, it's been my experience anyway.
Well, if we rebuild the traffic signal, we're looking at, you know, $30,000 additional with the engineering and the construction costs for that, as a second.
But we have that surface transportation.
Yes, yes, which we have in mind, sir.
To off-set it.
On the corner of Lantana.
Yes.
Three options you gave us. Option three is not a patch job, it's a repair job, 30%, 35% of the sidewalks, correct?
Yes.
And there's a difference. Option two is hiring a crew. And I really don't care, I just think that for the future, if we hire a concrete crew, we've got a lot of sidewalks for it, don't you agree with that?
We have a lot of other sidewalks to repair in other places also.
Yeah.
I think it will be...
You've got some to repair while they drive now, they'll start putting that water on their tourist sidewalk.
That's the contractor. That's going to be his responsibility, either he will repair those or we will charge him for it.
So I just like to look at 10 years down the road, it's no brainer.
No matter what we do, we're not going to make everybody happy here. We're going to make a decision today, there's no way we're going to make everybody happy. But I don't think you can go wrong one way or the other. Because it's improving thanks to what you...
If you pour 40 foot of 150 foot block, will the city have the means to pressure wash the old concrete that's there now that's in good shape and make it look like the new concrete?
I'm not sure, do we have the word, pressure wash?
Yeah, we do, we've got some maintenance work, but I've not got that pressure wash yet.
I mean, that, that's small funds compared to what we're going to have here, even if we don't have the word.
As far as here, if you can get this block completed.
Any other comments?
I have a question. We need to amend Daniel White's motion to rescind the action from May, where it was filed.
Yeah, I think the motion would be to amend the action, because we're still going to take, we're not totally getting rid of it, so just amend it and off what you're doing.
So the motion needs to be to amend the May 12th action, and my preference is hiring a crew. Now, as Harris has indicated, it's in like to go up there and find somebody that's capable of telling us what we need to patch or repair. So therefore, I'm going to make a motion that we rescind the action taken in May of 15, and repair 30% to 35% of the sidewalk downtown, and make the radiuses ADA compliant. And repaint the second posse.
I'll second that. I'd like to make a statement there.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say that that downtown revitalization project, that's no longer on the back burner, it was more to the tune of about $13 million and about $2.5 million in grants. Just want to make sure people have their facts, because that's all I've ever seen during the whole time I've been here, the whole time that discussion was going down. And also, I think we need to take care of what we need to take care, and we need to very carefully view people's wants of what they want downtown. And my personal opinion is, and opinion of others that I've been speaking to eight years regarding this project, is if they want this big full-blown project, they need to help pay for it. pay for it instead of expecting the whole town to let their taxes be increased. Probably some twenty cent tax increase to pay for a project of that significance. You know, I travel quite regularly to different towns weekly and some of these towns have dropped a lot of money on these downtown projects and they never paid off for them. They got beautiful downtown, but Crosswalks is a very beautiful downtown compared to some that I've visited as well, and we're fortunate to have what we have.
Well, we're making the assumption that, you know, kind of that movie, Building Dreams, you know, if they build it, if we build it, they will come. Maybe they will, maybe they won't. But we've already got, I've already seen some improvement downtown and we've already gotten some new businesses going in. And I think there's only one space that's empty right now on Main Street and it's being renovated right now. So, I'm going to have to stay with what I, with what the people have said that I heard from.
I think you've actually got some deal to move downtown in anticipation of having some improvement, but I'm tired of hearing about it. The, I'm not sure exactly what the motion is on the floor. I think it's to fix up to thirty-five percent of the sidewalk and make the corners ADA acceptable and paint crosswalks. About pretty well something like that.
And I assume that it's the two-man crew?
Hiring two men plus the indicator. He's got two men that he assigned to, to a concrete crew. Is that correct?
Two men, four times, two part-time, sometimes, whether I made it for a while.
And is that included all the equipment that's necessary to do this? Didn't hear that in motion.
I had that in the truck, the truck, the apartment and a forty thousand dollar miscellane is for two, that's what I need.
I think that was in Tim's. Tim's C or what's called C.
Okay. Got a motion and a second? Well-called vote, please.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mayor from Tim's?
Aye.
Got some comments?
Aye.
Are they ready?
No. Motion carries. Thank you all for coming. Meeting adjourned.